And if I think it'll matter, I'll come back. I'm only two hours away.
You can brief the case and everything, Tommy.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It's about 10 after 6 on Thursday, May the 8th, 2025. Got a lot of guests tonight. We appreciate your patience with us. And there are just a couple of basic guidelines that I'd like you to consider as we try to listen to everybody. We do have some sign up sheets. Those of you who signed up, I'll start at the top and go through. And then those of you who did not sign up but may want to speak will have an opportunity to do so. I ask that all of you try to keep your comments to around three minutes so that we have an opportunity to hear everyone who wants to speak. I may gently ask you to wrap it up if you're going beyond three minutes. So just be forewarned, I'm not singling you out. As is our custom, we'll start this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence led by Councilman Anthony Dinkle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Anthony. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Councilperson Azar, Councilperson Boland.
Present.
Councilperson Chalos.
Here.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Dinkle.
Present.
Councilperson Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Lautermilke.
Present.
Council President Nation.
Here.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
Eight are present, one is absent.
Thanks, Michelle. At the beginning of every one of our meetings, we set aside up to 30 minutes for public comment on non-agenda items. These are the things that we are not talking about on our formal agenda that may be on the mind of our citizens. We have one person signed up so far tonight, and it's Herb Rooks. Welcome, Herb.
I'm Herb Rooks, livid, 14, 14 South Sixth. And I went to a zoning commission meeting last night and found out about a development. And this, I think, is on the agenda, but it isn't. It's the fact that you're asking for, like, an abatement or some program on Ohio for housing.
Yeah, that is on our agenda this evening.
But that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
What I'm talking about is how can you, I can see the map over there, how can you push through a project like that before you do set up a program? I mean, I was in the audience basically because of center, but, I mean, I'm so hysterical, I'm having a conniption. The, it looks like an instant ghetto. There are over 200 units there.
Well, Herb, I'll just note that you've also signed up to talk during the time when we will be discussing this project. It is on the agenda, so I think that that would probably be the right time to...
Well, I won't comment anymore on that. I'll comment on center when it's that time.
Okay. Thank you, Herb. There was a sign up sheet, but if anyone else would like to speak on non-agenda items, now's the time. All right. Hearing none, we'll keep moving. Corrections to the journal, Michelle?
There are none.
Communications from the mayor? Welcome, Mayor.
Hey, good evening, Council President Nation and members of the Terre Haute City Council. I will try to keep my remarks brief because obviously we've got a packed agenda and a long meeting this evening. I wanted to start with some of the work that the city has been doing as it pertains to two terms, regionalism and economic development. So Governor Braun, you know, he seems to do that thing that a lot of folks are doing now, and signed a slew of executive orders. One of those executive orders asks the state to analyze our regions. What are our regions? Well, years ago, under Governor Pence, it was the Regional Cities Initiative. Then we received funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. That turned into Ready 1.0, which then turned into Ready 2.0. So even though the governor is canceling the Ready program, which is focused on quality of life initiatives in communities across the Hoosier State, he wants us to study our region and get that more in sync with programs like Work One, the Regional Workforce Board, as well as regionalize our economic development commissions. What does all of that mean? Well, we had a good meeting with Secretary David Adams, the Commerce Secretary for the State of Indiana. And we focused that meeting, higher education partners, our Terre Haute EDC, the mayor. We focused that meeting on what does economic development truly look like, not just here in the city of Terre Haute, but across the Hoosier State. Terre Haute, and frankly, the state of Indiana, is the ninth-best state at importing college talent. So a lot of folks come to the state of Indiana for college. We are the seventh-worst state in the nation at retaining those college graduates. If you look at our high school retention, if you look at employment directly after high school with an associate's degree, with a graduate degree, we are lagging behind other Midwest peers and frankly, the United States of America. While our GDP and businesses continue to grow, what we're seeing, especially here regionally in communities like Terre Haute, is this draw back to advanced manufacturing, which looks good on paper for total capital investment, but the total number of jobs at manufacturing is the lowest it's been in the United States of America and productivity's the highest it's been. Why that matters for you, City Council, is the city of Terre Haute and the Terre Haute EDC are relooking at how we handle the term "economic development." We are, in particular, I'm focusing a lot of time on our financial services industry, growing that, expanding health and human sciences. And of course, the great project that a lot of folks are currently talking about is Rose Holman Institute of Technology's Ventures Project. So that project is finally moving dirt along Poplar and State Road 46. Just that alone, that innovation center, has allowed us to already begin meeting with several companies, research and innovation companies, in the hope that they relocate to the Hoosier State. So outside of economic development, I wanted to provide three shorter updates. The first is, we have started and almost finished our first work order for sidewalks. And as I said a few months ago, we're doing two work orders this year because the sidewalk budget doubled this year thanks to gaming fund revenue, taxes from the casino. That second work order will go out to bid tomorrow. Our goal through those two work orders is to catch the city up from 18 years' worth of sidewalk requests. Of course, by the time I say that, someone got on 311 and added another one to the list. So we're getting closer to catching up, and we're happy to see Work Order 1 in progress and then bidding out Work Order 2. Next, our community crossing grant program has started. That is fancy for our street paving with the help of the state of Indiana. Many things happen with changes at the governor level and the federal level, and unfortunately, the state's been just a little bit slower at rolling those funds out. We still are on pace to begin the bulk of our street paving, really from June to August, but work will begin in May. Lastly, our redevelopment director, Jordan Marvel, is here. We have finished our first tranche of demo for the year, which was 30 homes, took care of those. Our next demolition hearing is June. Our goal is to go just a little bit above 30 there. Why that matters is, again, we went from doing demo hearings, one maybe two times a year, to take out 60 condemned properties a year, to now every three months. And we are maintaining our pace of removing 120 dilapidated properties in the city of Terre Haute, so we're happy to deliver that good news today. With that, I'll stand by for any additional questions, but want to thank you guys for the time and look forward to our next mayor's update in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sakman. To our recent arrivals standing in the back corner, feel free to approach and come straight up and have a seat here either on the side. That'll allow you to cut out discreetly when it's time to take the kids home, or right here next to David in the front pew. We need to have everybody in a seat. I'm sorry about that, but that's part of the fire code. So, welcome. Reports from city officials.
There are none.
Reports from the Board of Public Works and Safety?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
We have one. Special Ordinance 11-2025, rezoning of property located 1103 South Center Street. Area planning tabled this, and the city council must table it as well.
Thank you, Michelle. We don't have to push this through its paces. I'll just entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Councilman Dinkle.
I move that we table Special Ordinance 11-2025 until the June 5th meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Dinkle and seconded by Councilman Chalos that we table Special Ordinance Number 11-2025 until June 5th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one is tabled. Items on first reading, please, Michelle.
Resolution 13-2025 approving a declaratory resolution declaring an area as an economic development area and approving an economic plan for Brickyard Estates and Paddock at the Park allocation area.
Welcome, Jordan.
Good evening, President Nation and fellow council members. I'm Jordan Marvel, Director of the City of Terre Haute Department of Redevelopment. Respectfully, we would request that you take the information provided to you by both the legal team and development team tonight and refrain from voting until the June meeting. This way, we can give the council as a whole the same baseline understanding of the project and the mechanisms involved with it. I'd like to briefly introduce the proposed TIF district tied to this development, a project that includes both single-family homes and multifamily units located between Ohio Boulevard and Edgewood Grove. This project is aimed at expanding options for residents and attracting professionals and growing families who already work in our community but currently live elsewhere, reversing the outward migration of middle and upper-income households from the city of Terre Haute and Vigo County. It responds to a growing need we continue to hear from local employers. What makes this opportunity unique is that the developer approached us with a plan and is willing to back the project financially. This means that if the project encounters difficulties, the city would not be the ones holding the bag at the end of the day. That level of private backing is something that many communities have struggled to secure, and many of these projects have fallen through because of it. The infrastructure component would be financed through a low-interest loan from the Indiana Finance Authority's Residential Infrastructure Fund, or RIF, program. The proposed TIF district will capture new tax increment from the development itself to repay that loan, and any portion of the loan payment which the TIF does not cover would be paid by the developer. Again, we're not asking for a vote tonight. We're simply asking for time over the next few weeks to gain and provide more detail, speak with interested individuals and concerned homeowners, and give everyone the opportunity to fully understand the scope and mechanics of the proposal. We'll bring it back to the council for a vote in June. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Dustin Leach with Barnes &amp; Thornburg.
Thanks, Jordan. Welcome back, Dustin.
Good evening, Council President Nation and council members. It's good to be back. So I just wanted to talk through the legal blocking and tackling of the two resolutions, as with other amendments to the economic development area and the creation of economic development areas that we've done in the past couple of months related to other projects. The resolution before the council this evening is the third step in a four-step process that began with a declaratory resolution at the Redevelopment Commission and then passed through a approval at the Plan Commission yesterday evening. The resolution provides that the council approves the creation of a new economic development area, to be known as the Brickyard Estates and Paddock at the Park Economic Development Area, and approves the creation of a commercial TIF area within that economic development area. And then the second resolution amends that new economic development area to establish a residential TIF district in the second of the two parcels that comprise the economic development area. That's known as the, I'm sorry, the commercial TIF is the Paddock at the Park allocation area, and the residential TIF is the Brickyard Estates allocation area. Happy to answer any procedural questions that you may have, and afterwards, I'm going to bring up the development team to discuss the project further.
So there's another, the team is coming up next to continue the presentation?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I'm just doing the legal, the boring part.
Does anyone have a question for Dustin before, yes, Amanda?
Thank you. I'm going to take you through the same questions I asked last night just for some clarification. I reported back to the rest of the city council members, but I'd like for them to be able to get the answers from you as well. If we pass Resolution 13 and 14 in creating these TIFs and the residential TIF, does it tie us to this specific development or this specific developer?
No, it doesn't. So all of this approves is the collection of tax increment from these two parcels, including residential property in the residential TIF district and commercial property only in the commercial TIF district. There's no obligation to have any particular developer develop those parcels or for this project in particular to proceed on these parcels. This approval just allows the collection of the tax increment and the approval of the economic development plan for the use of that tax increment, which is the development of infrastructure on this site for future development.
So if this developer, this particular development, does not get, let's say, the rezoning that it needs in order to do this project, another development could still benefit from this TIF?
Well, if the TIF district got through all four steps of the process and was created and the proposed development didn't proceed, the increment would be collected in the event that there was any increment from future development on this site. And so that collection of increment would be a tool that the Redevelopment Commission could have to use for future development, or in the event that there was future development and that development needed infrastructure surrounding and serving it, that could be used as well. You can use tax increment revenues for a range of things, including, for example, public safety services. So if this got developed and later on, a new fire station was needed that served this area, that could be something that you could maybe use these TIF revenues for in the future. But it's, you know, if you're not doing, if you're not approving of the sort of project-specific financing, you move into the territory of what's authorized under the statute and the plan.
And the RIF funding that we heard about from Jordan, in negotiations with the state, in order to get that funding, are they requiring the city of Terre Haute to establish a TIF?
So the application that was approved requires the establishment of these TIF districts to provide a second revenue stream in addition to the developer guarantee that goes behind the loans.
And is it your understanding that if this TIF and the residential TIF are not created, that the state would likely not provide those low-interest loans?
Right. We wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't be able to live up to the application promise that was made, and so the state would likely move their funding to other opportunities.
And there was a question that was raised last night that I think would be important for you to answer. These resolutions creating the TIF districts and kind of putting some of this into the hands of redevelopment, does this in some way give redevelopment extra powers in regards to this development? Or would the developers still need to go through all the traditional steps, like going through area planning for rezoning and coming to our city council for rezoning, those types of things?
So this in no way modifies the development process from a legal standpoint, and it does not change the land use, planning, or zoning character of these parcels, and that process flows separately under sort of different statutory cover. Planning and zoning lives in 3674 of the Indiana Code, and this is under 36714. The only thing this allows the Redevelopment Commission to do is to collect incremental revenue and then to use that incremental revenue to finance public improvements that support this economic development area.
And one last question for you. If the loans are repaid early, can we end the TIF early?
Yeah, so any time that there's not an outstanding obligation related to an allocation area, the Redevelopment Commission can go through the same four-step process to adopt a declaratory resolution amending the economic development area and allocation areas to eliminate them. And that would pass through Plan Commission here and then back to the Redevelopment Commission. So same process in reverse.
But it would need to originate from redevelopment?
Correct, yeah. Redevelopment Commission is who would have to move first.
Okay. Nothing else? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Thompson. Anybody else before we continue with the presentation? Councilperson Dinkle.
So, let me make sure I have my notes here. So there's been concerns raised that with this new development, of course, if it's a TIF, all of the increased assessed value goes to the TIF and redevelopment has control over those funds. And there's concern that with this level of development, the number of people living on it, that that would be cutting out the school corporation. Is there a mechanism, and if so, how, where we or somebody within the city of Terre Haute could say, "We want this much of that assessed value instead of going to the TIF to be given to the school corporation or another unit?"
So there's not a legal mechanism to sort of reduce the amount of TIF that's collected. That being said, redevelopment commissions, if there's not obligations for money that they receive, have the ability to pass that money through on an annual basis to the underlying taxing districts. What I'd also note about particularly the school districts is that referendum, so the sort of the portion of the property tax levy that's related to any school referendum is not affected by the tax increment collection, so it sort of, it comes out first and then above that. So the school district does get their sort of referendum levy related to the new development, and the likelihood of sort of additional students coming to the district as a result of people living in these homes generally means additional state funding on a sort of per-student basis. So, but it is possible to pass it through to the underlying units if the TIF is available. Yeah.
And my other question, so this, of course, went through for the RIF and all of that funding that's, there was an application submitted to secure that funding. I assume that the plans that we see behind us are tied to that, so theoretically, there's not a possibility that, say, six months down the road, we approve all of this, we don't see this level of build, that it's, you know, somehow scaled back?
The development team has been in conversation with the IFA, and this proposal is the proposal that was provided to the Indiana Finance Authority.
So they would be tied to that, I would think. Okay, thank you. I go.
Anybody else at this juncture? Thank you. Welcome, Eddie.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. Mr. President, members of the council, Eddie Felling, on behalf of Lyndon Felling Law Firm. It's my pleasure this evening to be representing our two developers, Crestline and Jared Graeble, as well as the current landowner with what we're hoping to be $70 million investment on a corner of vacant land in the middle of Terre Haute. As to clarify to everybody in the room tonight, I know some of them were here or were at the Area Plan Commission meeting yesterday. The only item in front of the council, as you all know, is the establishment of the TIF district. We do know, and we have filed yesterday the request for rezoning, which will be on both the Area Plan meeting in June and both, more than like, more likely than not, both of your June meetings. So what I've asked, upon the request of both redevelopment and this council, I've asked the developers to come this evening to give a brief overview of what the project's going to look like. Obviously, you have the pictures in front of you, but because these are so closely tied with the funding, with the TIF district, we wanted the whole picture painted for the public and for the council alike as we move forward. So with that, I'd like to start, and if there's any questions for me on the development side, I'd be happy to answer those, but I'd like the opportunity to introduce both Crestline and Jared Graeble to briefly introduce the two projects. There's two developers here working separately. Crestline's doing the multifamily on the east side of the project, and Jared Graeble will be doing the single-family housing on the west side of the development. So if there aren't any questions for me, I'd like to have James and Camden come on behalf of Crestline and tell you a little bit about what the apartments and the multifamily's going to look like.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is James Wilson. I'm with Crestline Communities. We're a vertically-integrated multifamily developer here in Indiana. I'm here to introduce Paddock at the Park. It's a 176-unit Class A multifamily property. This property is envisioned to be an amenity-rich property spanning 12 acres and including ample parking, spacious clubhouse, resort-style pool, pickleball, a dog park, connected walkways, trails, and landscaped green space. Architecturally, and you can see the representative pictures behind you, the vision is one of warmth, sophistication, and distinction, blending modern functionality with timeless character. Each house features its own private covered entry, oversized windows, attached garages, and sophisticated detailing. We will be working with local employers to offer housing for new employees, commuting employees, and consulting professionals, an area that we've identified as missing in the Terre Haute market for housing. This is a 30-plus-million-dollar investment here in Terre Haute. It will have an anticipated rental rate of between $1,250 a month and $1,872 a month per unit and is targeting, obviously, an upscale renter wanting to take advantage of a superior property that is well-located and unique in character. That's my overview. I'm happy to take questions, but thank you for your consideration. A project of this caliber simply could not happen without your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody in the council want to ask any questions before the presentation continues?
And just to be clear, I mainly wanted to get the faces introduced, let everybody see what the project's going to look like. We're going to have at least three, we've already had now two public meetings, and we'll have three more between Area Plan and this council to discuss the project more in depth as well. So of course, I don't want to interrupt if there are questions, but I'd also like to introduce Mr. Graeble.
Thank you, Eddie. Welcome, Mr. Graeble.
I'm Jared Graeble. Thank you, council, for having us up here. I am a single-family builder developer. I am also your local home builders president here with the Western Indiana Builders Association, which is based out of here in Terre Haute. Our plan tonight is to talk just a little bit about the Brickyard Estates, which is a 93-home subdivision based on 23 acres. The plan for this layout is that homes that would be along Ohio Boulevard and Brown would have rear-load garages. There'd be no pulling in or off of the street, kind of hiding everything to the back. There'd be an alley that would run behind the back on both of those tracks that would also have another row of homes that would have rear-load garages as well. The concept or the way that we would like to build this is these homes are going to be based on about 1,600, 1,700 square feet, price point at $350,000 to $400,000. We would come in and initially build 10 homes as we can sell those homes if things keep, if the market keeps moving like it has been. The goal is to try to build, you know, somewhere in that 20 to 25 homes a year there. The design of the house will be aesthetically pleasing, no vinyl siding, everything would be painted. There'll be somewhere in that four to seven different home designs with two or three different elevation changes, so that the goal is not to have the cookie-cutter look, but to have a subdivision that flows together to where everything, you know, kind of blends, same craftsmanship, same style. Outside of that, I, thank you.
If I may, for both the council and the public as well, once the meeting's wrapped up this evening, I'll hang out, and I will more than happily provide my email and contact information. I know we'll be meeting with some council members. We want to... We want to hear, obviously, from the public. Everybody here has an opinion. It's important to us. I understand that the vast majority of you don't support this project, but we want to hear from you. So I'm happy to provide my personal information. I would only ask that you be as courteous and respectful as you can in the communication, and I promise to do the same with all of you. So, thank you, and council, if you need anything from me, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Eddie. Okay. At this time, we're going to move into public comment on Resolution 132025. There was a sign-up sheet out in the hallway, as I previously stated. If you did not sign up and you, and everybody goes and you still have things that you think have not been said yet and would like to add, there will be an opportunity to do that after we work through the people on the list. I would also remind you that I'm going to try to ask you to keep it around three minutes. So, first on the list is Vincent Little. Welcome, Vincent.
My name is Vincent Little. I live in Edgewood Grove subdivision, and I'm a land surveyor here in town. In the resolution, Section 39 references the TIF, the financial aspects, whereas Section 4143 of the Act, the Act being Indiana Code 36714, creates an economic development area and provides that all the rights, powers, privileges, and immunities that may be exercised by this commission, being Redevelopment Commission, in an area needing redevelopment or urban renewal areas, may be exercised in an economic development area, subject to all the conditions set forth in the Act. Meaning, short-term, three-minute talk, they can circumvent the zoning and they can circumvent the subdivision, given in special circumstances that they deem necessary. So that would be part of approving the Resolution 14. Also in that resolution, it says, "The plan does not provide for any change in the use of the property in the area." It's zoned R1, which means it has, you know, single-family home, beautiful picture, beautiful maps. Don't look at them, we're talking zonings and TIF money. Next month, they've already turned in for hearing next month, Special Ordnance Number 182025, an application for rezoning, and current zoning R1, single-family, rezoned to R3, multi-family. There is, the, all the property is included in the R3 request. All of it will be R3. Now, I can't figure out why in the world you're going to build 90 houses in an R1, it's R1 now, and hap, after having changed it to R3. So, when it gets approved, or this, or when, if it would get approved in R3, anything up to a nursing home could be put on that property. So, we need to keep that in mind. All right, it's all time.
Vince, I'll just point out that I have not yet read the rezoning petition to which you're referring.
Yes.
Which I guess was just filed yesterday.
That's correct.
If I'm not mistaken. And the rezoning petition that you're referencing, that would purportedly rezone the whole parcel, R3, is not on tonight's agenda.
Yes.
However, with that said, I'd like to invite Eddie Felling up to specifically address that concern, because I think that we're all interested in that at some level. Can you please address that, Eddie?
Absolutely, absolutely. So there are, in the picture you're looking at, there's actually four parcels. There's a house on the northeast corner, that's maybe an acre, and there's another parcel, I can't remember if it's on the northwest or southwest corner. The R3 parcel is the, is that entire footprint where you see the apartments, plus it goes a little bit, it, the parcels aren't perfect 50/50. It goes a little bit over to the west of where Adams Boulevard or Adams would go through. So the only thing that we're requesting that's going to be R3 is on the east side of the map that you're seeing. There is a little bit of a sliver, just because of the way the parcel is currently drawn, that goes into some of that single-family there right along Adams. But again, based upon what our commitment to the state to get the funding on this project, that's the project you're going to get. It's a little bit different than your normal rezoning, where, yes, you always have the concern that any developer can come in here and say they're going to do anything and turn around tomorrow and do something that, as long as it fits within that criteria. But this is, this is what you're getting, and it's only intended to be the east side of that parcel. Oh, I will, if you want to double-check, you can see in the descriptions themselves, the two parcels are noted. There are two parcel numbers, one's just that small house and one's the parcel to the east. So if there's an error in the legal description, which is entirely possible when you have lawyers doing it, the intent is only the east side.
Thank you, Eddie. Next up is Richard Beeson. Welcome, Mr. Beeson.
I remember quite a few years ago, I had some friends that lived in a luxury apartment. I couldn't afford to live there as a young teacher at the time, but I did have some friends that, both of them taught, and they could, married couples that lived there, beautiful apartment complex. And it is, was beautiful for 10 years. It's a gated community in the, you know, I mean, they had a, had a bead lead into the apartment complex. It was a gorgeous area, tennis courts, they didn't have pickleball at the time, but those quickly go by the wayside, and they turn into, now it's very, very dangerous area, not safe at all, no one would want to live there, really, that probably no teachers, well, maybe teachers lived there because that's all they can afford, but it's not a good idea to be doing that. I know that the developer himself has done a lot for the city. I know the Laverne Gibson cross-country course, I know, or I think they did a lot for Meadows Shopping Center and keeping that alive and making that a good thing. I can't see that they would want this to be their legacy. And, you know, if it is, we should call it the Gibson Legacy Apartments at the paddock if they're going to be proud of it. And if they're not, then we probably, they probably shouldn't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Beeson. I understand the temptation to applaud, and I get it, but I'm going to have to ask for some, for some order, so that we can just keep moving. Next is Vin Isaya. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, Vin. Welcome.
Council members, thanks for having me. I'm going to try to get to the point really quick because we only have three minutes. We also got a lot of new information tonight that we didn't get before, and so some of this is going to be a little tap-dancing, I apologize. Let's first start off with, have we heard what the life of the loan is going to be yet? At simple interest, it turns out to be eight and a quarter million that you'll have to pay back if this is over the full 20 years. It was stated earlier about whether the TIF ends when the bond goes out, or in this case, it would be the loan, usually the bonds. But there's nothing saying that they can't take out another loan and continue this process. So you have to envision that there's going to be a fight, that if the TIF goes through, that it's going to be there all 20 years and no, we're done because we're done paying off our loans. That option is there, but it doesn't have to be fulfilled. Okay. Dardia, in 1998, this is the California version, but I'll tell you why it's relevant to what we're talking about now. He studied TIFs from '93 to '96, and he found two-thirds of them grew. A full third of them did not. So be aware of that. But the scarier thing is, is out of the 38 that he looked at, only three were self-financing, which means at some point, we are going to have to put money into that TIF, if those numbers stayed the same. Why is that relevant? This is 40 years into California having TIFs in place. They had the '60s and '70s go by, and then the '80s and the '90s came, and they were in a different steady state. If everything, at that point, everything should have been working where, hey, we saw what people did in the past, we learned from mistakes, and they still only have three out of 38 that are self-financing. That's a 7.8%, a 7.89% rate of success, if you will, because the whole point of the TIF is it's supposed to be something that pays for itself, or at least that's what we were told. Merriman in '04 showed that cities that have TIFs grow slower in general than cities without TIFs. Okay, let's move to Indiana. Hicks and others at Ball State in 2015, so we'll move up in time a little bit. The average TIF, and we were told last night at the area planning that the commercial TIF is your run-of-the-mill TIF, your average TIF in Indiana has no meaningful impact. County leaders should evaluate potential tax shift to the non-TIF. So far, I believe, the only words that we've gotten in that direction have been, "We've run the numbers, they're okay." Fantastic. Okay. Life of loan. Let's move on to some of the things that were addressed tonight for the first time. I apologize, I'm also going to ask a question if you guys don't want to answer it, that's To get the funding, I believe the statement that was made was that the TIF needed to be here as a second revenue stream. So if you could find a second revenue stream that was not the TIF, I really don't see the state saying, "Sorry, we're not going to give you the money." Otherwise, that's pretty much the state saying, "You have to have a TIF in order to get any money from us." I don't believe that's how RIF works, but I have not studied RIF yet because I've only had 30 hours to study all of this so far and get the new information tonight and digest it, and try to do that in that dark corner back there. Okay.
Vin, I would encourage you to follow up after this meeting with Eddie Felling, who's going to make himself available for these kinds of interactions, and I'd also ask you to start wrapping it up.
No problem. No offense, we shouldn't have to do this because the information should have been out. I've been able to answer my own questions already. The fire departments are covered by the township, but now the TIF money's going to pay the fire department, so we're just taking over for the township. Does the township suck that we have to take over for that? School corporation, it's not the funding that's the problem, they get their money from sales tax, they don't get it from property tax, and TIF is about property tax. But the real question is, is are the schools ready for the people to come in, and somebody's going to talk about why they're not? Okay, something else, just out of curiosity, if this is zoned R3 on the right side, is it going to be zoned as R3 later on the west side? Once the TIF is in place, they can pretty much modify and do what they want without having to ask, but I'm thankful of what we're going to do. So ask yourself in 20 years, who's going to be mayor and what decisions they're going to make about this TIF. No meaningful impact.
Hey, good evening, guys. Great to be here. I just want to talk about the TIF, for instance, a gentleman he mentioned, Michael Hicks, well-known economist, close friend and mentor of mine, and we have actually done work with him as it pertains to this RIF and this TIF. So, let's just reset for a second. What is a TIF? What are we talking about? We are talking about drawing a circle around this project and using the taxes inside of that circle to pay off a 2% loan given by the state of Indiana, essentially fronting the tax revenue to build the infrastructure that is backed by the developers, not the city. What separates this TIF from what the previous gentleman had said is, this is a self-financing TIF because the developer signs the back and the guarantee. The city is not backing this TIF with these folks' property tax money. So I want to make that point clear, as, because it is very confusing, because residential tax increment financing was just passed two years ago, and the IFA loan was just opened two years ago. So I have now followed the 27 projects that have been given funding. A lot of those projects, not only were the tax revenue enough, but they actually had their councils do abatements on top of that to bring the developer in. We do not need to do that, and here's why. What you want is, if the taxes, in our projections, show they will exceed the loan payments, that allows you to pay off the bond quicker. That is going to help the city's overall credit rating, for lack of a better term. So this entire financial project, when you look at the numbers, has already been adjusted from the changes of Senate Bill 1, and is created in place to allow two portions of the development, the commercial, which has a 2% cap, and the residential and the 1% cap, to flow up to the state during that payback time. So, the other thing that I keep hearing, but has changed in our state code, is now when you have one circle, one TIF, you can pull in funds from another TIF. So that, yes, there's a traffic study, I'm sure they'll bring that up, and we're engineering, everyone's happy to answer that. All of the infrastructure around this TIF, around this circle, specifically Ohio Boulevard and Fruit Ridge and Ohio and Brown, that already needs fixed today, without the development. So why is the city not fixed it today? Right? Like, it's, you need to be a TIF so you can access the other commercial TIF funds to actually be able to address the concerns of the traffic study implementation. That's another benefit of the TIF that changed, I think, a decade ago, about a decade ago, is where you can pool those TIFs to actually implement the traffic safety plan. So that's why, I know it's confusing and it's new, and I'm happy he quoted those individuals because those were some of the individuals that this administration asked, because we believe in higher education, we believe in our economists, and I reached out to Michael Hicks specifically on this project to also help me through the other 27 that other cities did. Because I was against this entire concept when this started, because it was foreign and frankly new to municipal finance and had to see other clear-cut examples. Those questions that he just asked were phenomenal. Those, all of those questions, except maybe one, I had when I started looking at this current TIF with the same economist, so I'm thankful that he asked those. That's just a financing perspective, not as it pertains to the development. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next on the list of signed, of people who've signed up is Heidi Isaya. Welcome, Heidi.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. Typically, when you think of, historically, a TIF goes within like a blighted area. I don't think of Ohio Boulevard and Edgewood Grove as that definition, and I'm going to talk through about the situation with the schools. We've been given multiple different price ranges for these homes, anywhere ranging from $350,000 to $450,000. Tonight, we were given, you know, a different range. So, that being said, the average meetings, median salary in Terre Haute is $41,000. Dual-income property owners' median salary is around $100,000. I would find it hard to picture locals buying here. Therefore, they presumably would need to bring people in from outside, especially talking about the commercial zoning with $1,500 to $1,800 a month. That's more than a mortgage, you'd think they'd just buy a home. Building conditions rating as of April 1st of '22 from indiana.gov, there was a study done by Vigo County School Corporation, which I emailed to all of you, and I'd only heard back from one of you regarding that, so if you'd like, you can reference that in your email. None of the surrounding schools in the TIF district have a B or higher rating. All are falling within the C and D range. When I say the rating, that means the information that the corporation, they had an engineer come in and they graded the schools based on the structure and integrity of the building. I have been told that the school corporation can hold more students. That might be true in Riley, where they have empty classrooms and low student enrollment. That is not the case on the east side currently, and it has a strong chance to become worse with the proposed developments, especially since they closed Meadows Elementary. Also, keep in mind that there are classrooms that could hold 24 students, and there are conditional situations, like special education rooms, that might only have six to eight students in that room because they qualify to be in that room. But that room is spoken for and cannot be used for gen ed classrooms. That being said, square footage cannot be considered because capacity is listed. For example, Meadows and Hoosier Prairie had the same number of classrooms, but Hoosier Prairie has 7,000 more square feet. Stating that we have more room for students, as there are conditions in every building with, will skew that data. So basically, just because a classroom is on a blueprint does not mean it can be used for an average 24-student class, which will reduce the available space in the building. I can personally attest to the direct impact of the closing of Meadows, as myself and my teaching partner both have 31 third-grade students in an east-side building, which exceeds the corporation average of 24 per room. Let me, let me use Lost Creek as an example. Let me, let me use Lost Creek as an example. If you count the K through five classrooms, and subtract out the special ed, and multiply it by twenty-four, the corporation class size, you get seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight. Current enrollment at Lost Creek is seven-hundred-and-fifty. Area schools are practically full. So the mayor had mentioned the funding for the students. Yeah, the student will get the funding, but this square footage in the building will not change, creating overcrowded classrooms on the east side. It seems as if it could be a hard sell to accept, expect people to pay nearly half-a-million dollars for a home with the public school buildings in the area rated as C-minus and D, and large class sizes. People always consider schools when moving to a new area. Considering a new referendum did not pass, property assessments went up, increasing all of our property taxes, and the square footage of these old schools did not increase. I do not see the community supporting a new referendum with the tax increase hikes, implying the school building's conditions will not improve. I believe people might avoid purchasing homes at this price because of poor school ratings, one-hundred-and-seventy-six apartment complexes next to their four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar homes certainly probably won't be appealing. Finally, my request in June is for you to vote no on the proposed high-density houses and one-hundred-and-seventy-six apartment units, and to consider appropriate development to match the historical jewel that makes up this area. Vote to zone the whole plot residential one with fewer homes developed on the land. Vote no to R-three commercial zoning. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Heidi. Next on the list is Kevin Barr.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Kevin Barr, and I live in Edgewood Grove, and, uh, you may be, I hope you're familiar with the petition. I programmed the petition, uh, I've been emailing it every fifty signatures, uh, to Michelle, and assumed that she was forwarding it to you guys. So, you guys have seen the petition, I won't talk about it, you already know what's in it. Uh, the only reason I came up was to say that, uh, at this point, uh, just checked on my iPhone, five-hundred-and-fifty people, five-hundred-and-fifty people in the community have signed the petition, and you can read the petition, and, and the only reason I'm up here, because we're talking about take, getting TIF money. Uh, so I'll, I'll just focus on that. The, the thought occurred to me today that, my understanding is, you're gonna go to the state and request the TIF money, and they have to approve it, or they'll give it to somebody else. Is that kind of how that, what the procedure is next? Means, the state's gotta approve the TIF. Well, anyway, if that is the case, um, uh, the, the thought occurred to me that if the state knew of the community's feeling about the current development, uh, that's not gonna bode well for getting approval, you know, for the TIF money. So I would encourage the developer to work with the community, uh, and try and resolve that issue, you know, before the, but, before you try and get the TIF money. So, that's the only point I had.
It's my understanding, Kevin, that whether or not a TIF is established is actually by action of this city council. Um, I, I think that what's needed at the state level has already been done, so...
Oh, and Todd, just to clarify, I think you were talking about the RIF, the RIF, that funding would be coming from the state. I, I think that's what you were referring to. Okay.
I know, I know, I know how to program computers, uh, I'm, Ben is the expert on TIFs and all this stuff.
We're all learning. Anyway, my point is that your voices are being heard right now by people who are making the decision about the tax increment finance district establishment. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah. Well, yeah, just reiterate petition and, and, um, repeat what was already said, I think basically the petition would like to see the whole, whole area and, and homes with enough, uh, room for green space and, and that kinda thing, somewhere, around the number of houses that they're proposing now, and apartments, basically, so...
Thank you, Kevin. Um, next up, Kathy Taylor.
I, I will, uh, fold my comments, so the next person will...
Thanks, Kathy. Next up, Jenny Mueller. Welcome, Jenny.
Hi, Jenny. Thank you. Um, thank you, city council members, um, for being here tonight and listening to our comments. Um, I really just have some questions that I've been pondering in my mind, um, since I learned about this project just a week ago, um, and then more information tonight. So I'm just, I just really wanna share some concerns that I have with you, um, maybe plant some seeds for thought as you guys think about this before you, before you vote next time. Um, so with the proposed development, um, around two-hundred-and-seventy family units are being built, my concern is, where are those families coming from? Um, yes, there's been note that, um, there's data, I, I'm just curious where the data is that show the need for this style of housing at this price point in this community, um, based on an argument that was, um, that was given to this, the, the same community three years ago with the closing of an elementary school, saying that there was no, no, um, projected population growth in the area, so no need for that school, and now we're hearing the opposite argument, that there is population growth in this area, so we need two-hundred-and-seventy more units, and as we just heard, where are all those children going to go to school? Um, and, um, regarding the, the RIF and TIF, um, I, I just read a little bit about it, saying that really it's, it's meant for areas with the potential for growth or need of redevelopment. Again, I question where the data comes from, that there is the potential for growth there, and the need for more housing, especially housing at that price point. Um, and so, and, and where is the redevelopment coming into play here, right? This is an undeveloped lot, um, I don't see how that is redevelopment, especially when we have so many neighborhoods in our town, um, that are in need of revitalization, right? So, um, could an economic development area, or whatever that's called, establishing that TIF area, could that be established in a location where there are neighborhoods that could really use the benefit of the, the dish, or the reinvestment in infrastructure in that area to really revitalize those homes, um, as opposed to, um, a new development, not a redevelopment in this case? Um, again, the, the price point of the homes, um, four-hundred-thousand dollars, um, on a sixty-six-hundred-square-foot lot. I just kind of did a quick analysis, again, I'm not a, a, a real estate analyst, or, um, to look at a full market analysis, but, I mean, we look at some homes in Hawthorne Woods, average price point, five-hundred-thousand on point-six to point-seven acres, um, twenty-five-hundred square-foot living space, right? Phoenix Hills, three-hundred-thousand, half-an-acre lot, two-hundred-plus square-foot living space, right? So if we're looking in that price point, it's not, again, he said it's not cookie-cutter, but to me, it looks very much the, what I heard someone else mention, packham-stackham houses, right? So, very much, um, doesn't follow the characteristic of the historic area in that, in that neighborhood as well. So, um, again, thank you for your time, just some of my concerns that I have regarding this.
Thanks, Jenny. Next up, David Schartzer.
May I make a very brief comment? Um, I, I know most of the council's aware of this, but I would invite everybody in the room to visit the Thrive website. There was a, a comprehensive housing study that was done, uh, for the need of, uh, homes in Terre Haute. It's a very well-done study, um, I anticipate having something from Ryan, hopefully next month, uh, outlining, uh, the specific need, but it even goes into detail about the price point of homes that are, are needed and, and within the city limits. So, I'd invite the council, if you haven't already seen that, I think most of you probably have, but the public as well, to review that study.
And, just to elaborate on that a little bit, uh, briefly, we have, uh, as a council, we have, uh, worked with Mayor Sakbon and, uh, Thrive administering ARPA money, American Rescue Plan Act money, and we've had a, now it's a years-long conversation about housing in Terre Haute. Um, I realize, you know, looking out at the audience, that, um, you know, many of you are, are new to this conversation, new to this subject, uh, and I'm not saying that that should change the way that you're approaching this, but all I did wanna do is validate the idea that there are studies out there, and they do show a need for, for housing at all price points, including, uh, an upper one, that this kind of falls into. So, it's not an argument for it, but it's more of a, a reiteration of the invitation to go and see for yourself, uh, and that's Thrive, T-H-R-I-V-E, West Central, uh, they are the ones who have produced these studies and shared them with us. Next up, Laura Lyons. Welcome, Laura.
Hi, there. Good evening. I'm a resident of Terre Haute, a new resident. When we moved here, we retired here. We chose Ohio Boulevard as our neighborhood. Uh, not many people retire to Terre Haute. We moved from Tampa, so we did it opposite. Uh, so here we are. So, the reason we chose Ohio Boulevard is because it is unique to this city. Terre Haute has nothing comparable to, to that particular corridor. It is also on the National Register of Historic Places. Nobody, well, I guess one person did mention that, uh, that it is on the national, I think from Nineteenth Street all the way up to Fruit Ridge, it's on the National Register. Um, but nobody's really talked about how that meshes with what's already there, and, and this project doesn't look like Ohio Boulevard. It doesn't look like that. And the rear garage entry is really nice. So what? You know, so what? You're putting two-hundred-and-seventy families' worth of cars on a boulevard that is stately, quiet, it's also a racetrack at times, so, uh, the proposals for the major residential development are, uh, they're out of step. They're out of step with the needs of the community, and they're out of, out of character for the community. And that's really something that's unfortunate, that this is even being considered with no, uh, consideration for the National Historic Register and so forth. So I started looking for, and, and my data may be a little bit, uh, 'cause I have like ten minutes to do this. So, Ohio Boulevard, from the twenty-fifth to Fruit Ridge, the average assessed value of single homes is about two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars. So that's, what, a mile and a half. The average square footage is about ninety-six. Uh, Redfin says that development is at point-zero-two percent. The growth is at point-zero-two percent, and of course, that could be wrong. But it kind of seems like that what's being proposed is not in keeping with those numbers, is not in keeping with that data. And it does kind of, um, make the current market, and, and despite studies, it's still kind of questionable. On top of, uh, the TIF, which is kind of my main concern, and I don't understand it, it is, it's, it's math, and I don't math, so it's something that I absolutely don't understand, but it just seems like a lot could go wrong. Somebody pointed out that a new time period, a new mayor, they don't have to honor what promises might be made today. There's no guarantee that whatever is promised here today, or whatever is voted on here today, is going to be stable in ten years. There's no guarantee for us. We don't know that yet. So I think that's something that really has to be looked at, has to be considered. Um, I think the negatives include overestimating the growth, absolute lack of transparency, I found out about this three days ago. Limited oversight, we don't know who's gonna be administering that, you all are not gonna be here probably in ten years, you're gonna be an entirely different council, we don't know how they're going to address the needs that we have and the answers that we get today. Even the promises can be broken, and we know that in government all the time, that's a given. Uh, lack of information, possibly falsely driving values out of alignment with what's actually necessary. You know, we can say those are gonna be three-to-four-hundred-thousand-dollar houses, are they really going to be three-hundred, four-thousand, three-hundred-to-four-hundred-thousand-dollar houses? We don't know that, things can change. Um, is it in the same alignment with typical growth? Is it gonna be what we need for the area? Um, and also the possibility of being committed to the TIF for decades, and that's a long time. I don't know that I'll be, I'm sixty-six, I don't know that I'll be around to see the end of the TIF. So, um, looking at that, I think also the other thing, Edgewood Grove's is not on the National Historic Register yet, but the corridor, uh, for Ohio Boulevard has been on since nineteen-eighty-nine, which I think is pretty outstanding, but it's not really recognized anywhere except the park that's at the beginning of the, of the corridor. Um, Vigo County and Terre Haute so far don't have their own historic board. I think that's necessary. You're in a historic district, I think it's necessary to have a historic board to help facilitate whatever growth. Nobody's gonna give Mr. Gibson any flak about developing, it's his property, he has that right, we respect that. What we don't respect is having information come at us very quickly, having no time to digest information, having votes made before people can understand what the information is, that maps the first thing I, the first time I've seen that. So, and quite honestly, that's forty acres that could be used a lot better, that's boring. That's not a very good subdivision. So, it's straight lines, there's nothing, you drive your bike and, you know, shotgun house. Also, I feel that there are a lot of forgotten neighborhoods in Terre Haute. As a new resident to Terre Haute, I'm looking at it with different eyes than the people that have lived here all their lives, or have lived here for decades. I'm looking at it as an area, and let's be honest, if you were coming from someplace else, would you retire to Terre Haute? Probably not. That wouldn't be the place you'd retire to, you'd go to Florida. You'd go someplace where you know the subdivisions are gonna be organized, the planning is gonna be different, you're gonna go where all those, and I look at Terre Haute and go, "Oh, my gosh, there's, there's beautiful streets, and there might be a boarded-up house, there might be several lots that are just empty. There might be, you know, the, the zoning and, and planning is, is haphazard, which probably didn't used to be the case, but now that it's a blight, it is the case now." So, um, I would hate to see, I would hate to see development go in where it isn't possibly necessary right now, or that level of development isn't necessary right now. Other places would, and other neighborhoods would certainly appreciate the attention, having their neighborhoods tied together with a look, with homes everywhere, that's a safety issue for these children, they have to go around. Um, we have little demand to justify the scale of this development. If the resolutions are about revitalization, I absolutely encourage the council to, and the developer to explore and prioritize affordable housing, infrastructure upgrades, and urban infill that respects the past, character and the present needs of our neighborhood on, uh, the Ohio Boulevard. Please, vote no on the resolutions, on Resolutions thirteen and fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I would like to add one, uh, brief rejoinder, which is, uh, Laura asked for, among other things, transparency. I would submit to everyone in this room that you are experiencing government transparency right now. Remember, at the beginning of this meeting, the petitioners stated that they don't want us to vote on this tonight. There will be three more meetings at which this is discussed, which will stretch out over the next month. You will have an opportunity to be heard. You are being heard now. You have time to figure this out, to understand it, and to digest it, and to make up your mind. That's what we do too, as council members. The last person who's signed up is Tommy, it looks like it's Mulhern?
Mulherin.
Mulherin. Welcome, Tommy.
Thank you.
I tell you, everybody, uh, to follow up on what you all said is just amazing, and,
you guys hit it on the head. I am originally from Evansville, Indiana, and I love Terre Haute. This is my second home, been up here since ninety-nine. When I came to this town, a gentleman by the name of Dan Wolf, anybody know him? Okay, Dan Wolf showed me around Terre Haute. Guess where he took me? Down Ohio Boulevard, right? Okay? The most wonderful place to be is Ohio Boulevard. Well, with everything that's been said, there's just a couple things I wanna share. I am currently living in this wonderful, this proposed apartment complex called Sycamore Terrace, okay? Was there back in, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, when it was, I think it was Thompson... Was there back in, you know, 10, 15 years ago when it was, I think it was Thompson Thrift. And what a place. I mean, beautiful. You ought to see it now. I live right outside the dumpster, and I got some pictures that I can show you. Theft is through the roof, okay? It's a mess. It's run by a company not here in town. They care nothing about us. And so it's turned into something like, some of you guys have said, that it's not going to be appealing for Terre Haute. We're talking about putting this much into that area. It makes no sense at all. I am concerned because Greg's got the property right next to Sycamore Terrace. He owns all that. So if we need this apartment complex, stick that apartment complex right there by Sycamore Terrace. He can build them all day long. I love it, I applaud him. Do we need more housing? To Mr. Nation's point, yeah, we probably do. But is this the place for it, guys? Right on top of our sacred park? I mean, it's just not the place for this, this time. Let's rethink this thing, and I really do ask you guys to vote no for this resolution. There's a lot of things we can do, but with everything everybody said, it just does not make sense. And I love Greg. Greg's done a lot for this community. I think she's a wonderful person. And the other thing, to your point, someone mentioned, this thing's been pushed through. Well, I heard from someone that this thing's been going on for over a year. And we just hear about it a couple of weeks ago? I've heard this several times. I don't know if you're not, but I think transparency is transparency. We want to be on top of this, and it's not right for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Okay, that's the end of the list of the people who've signed up to speak on Resolution Number 13. I'd like to now offer everyone else the opportunity to speak on Resolution 13 before I close public comment and the council speaks among ourselves, possibly calling Eddie or others up to the podium. Is there anyone else who has anything to add?
Judy.
Please just approach, yeah.
I thought I probably signed the wrong paper.
Well, there's another one. There's a Resolution 14, which is the companion, and so there are two of them, and I do see your name on it, Judy. So you can come to this one first if you want to, but it's your turn. Welcome.
My name's John Lottz. I live over at 270 Keene. We were talking about all the zoning and the infrastructure improvements and everything else associated with the project. Nobody has addressed the impact on traffic and what we're going to do about the infrastructure to support that. So I guess that's my question, if anybody can address that.
I think the mayor would like to take a crack at that.
Thanks, I'll bring Marcus up. So I guess I'll address two things. One, the consistent theme of transparency, and that leads to my second statement. We are currently in the middle of a traffic study. The traffic study would already be complete if we had decided on a project months ago. So we, they just submitted their designs and got things approved, and we instantly started on the traffic study. So when I hear like, oh, there's no transparency, I'm like, no. If we had known months ago, we would have already done the traffic study. So we are in the middle of our traffic study. That's another reason why we purposely said, hey, regardless of developer and community, the city purposely wants this to be pushed off a month so we can finish our work. We have to create a traffic plan whether or not this development goes through. And that's currently what we're doing now, and we've simply said, hey, we need a couple of weeks. Marcus will come in and lay out the exact specifics of that traffic study. We did hire another firm, United Consulting, no ties to Terre Haute, to do a QA QC on that traffic study, to get a second set of eyeballs on it as well, just to further validate the results of that traffic study for not just the folks in this room, but frankly, the city staff who are going to have to deal with whatever happens. Okay? So with that, I'll let Marcus cover those specifics.
Happy to. Good evening, Marcus Meyer, City Engineer. So again, as the mayor had mentioned, we, I think I learned about a week and a half ago, we were going to do a traffic study, which gives us just enough time, but not a whole lot of extra. So last week, we mobilized some traffic counters. You may have seen them on Fruit Ridge and Brown. We're going to move, I think, today to Ohio. We're going to get tube counters out to collect not only traffic volume and direction, but also speed so that we can address some of those concerns that we've heard that may not have anything to do with the development right now, but it may lead to some solutions. We're going to look from these tubes for peak hours, and we look to get some of our staff sitting on those intersections, peak hours, looking for turning movement counts, traffic delays, pedestrian counts, any concerns that they may see. And we're going to look primarily at the intersections of Fruit Ridge and Ohio, Brown and Ohio, and Poplar and Fruit Ridge. We've kind of, our initial thoughts are those are going to be the likely issues, but as we get these numbers in, we're going to kind of reach out for ripple effects if the numbers do indicate there'll be more. We've also put up some trail cams to pick up pedestrians, so we can pick up some pedestrian counts. And what we're going to do is we're going to take that data, most likely, and take that peak hour data that we collect from monitoring the intersections plus the traffic counts, and then we're going to create, using the IT trip generation manual model for this proposed development. That's going to give us a peak hour in and out of this, and we can apply that to those existing intersections and see what the impact is. I will note, we've already, we're already benefiting a little bit from this traffic study. We noticed some issues with the signal out at Fruit Ridge and Poplar, and I think the street department was out yesterday trying to get those Terron arrows fixed. I'm sure there's a few people in this room that were frustrated with those. I'm one of, one of them that's frustrated with them as well, so. I was through there today, and I think it's operating better. If it's not, please let me know. Because some of those, there's a little bit of fine tuning. But, so we're going to look to bring a traffic study back before not only this council, but also the Area Plan Commission, before this comes back. And it's going to take into account not only the residential, but the multifamily residential portion as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Anybody from the council? Well, he's up here. Councilman Chalos?
Yes, and somebody's safety concerns can also be addressed by the TIF district, correct?
I guess I don't, it would be ultimately up to redevelopment to use those funds, but yeah, if, my opinion is that if you can benefit the TIF area, you should be able to use those funds better. And speaking of safety, I did leave out that we're also going to be reviewing all the accidents in the area, looking for any common denominators there. And we also have a Safe Streets For All study going on right now, which, sorry for the shameless plug. If, we have a public outreach part of it going on now where there's a survey that you can take, and there's also a public mapping. If you just Google Safe Streets Terre Haute, it's, you'll probably find it pretty quickly on the city's website. There's an online mapping tool that's really cool. The part that we're really looking for there, we have the accident data, there's a close calls section. Those are the things that we don't get information on through accident reports, and some people call and tell us, or some people just keep driving and are thankful they weren't in an accident. But we're looking to drive down accidents in all of Terre Haute, not just this area, and the Safe Streets For All study can do that. I guess while we're on the study route, we're also going to be looking at this intersection particularly close in the near future of Fruit Ridge and Ohio. We received a grant from the Indiana Department of Health to do a trail extension, and we're looking at doing an extension to connect Heritage Trail to Deming Park, as well as carrying that extension on down to Margaret Avenue. That crossing is going to sit right in this corridor, so there's going to be another set of eyes on it too in the near future, and as we look to bring improvements to the area. Sorry, I threw a lot at you.
Glad to hear about the trail extension. Thank you, Marcus.
So we even, sometimes with traffic studies, people will put cops to watch traffic slow because we all slow down when we see a cop. Come on, I know everyone does it. We've even asked the cops to like kind of back off a little bit to get the true speed on the Boulevard. So we've gone through the variables and helped pull things away as well. I've seen that in the past where the traffic study is false because of the cops.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Marcus.
I'll also note, we try to place them in shadows and hide the tubes the best we can because we want real data.
Of course. Judy, you're up. Yes, please.
I'm the mayor. Before I start, Mr. Felling, could you tell us what else is in R3?
What else?
What other businesses or establishments that go into R3?
No businesses. It's just multifamily residential.
How many?
How many? In the entire city? Oh, it's...
No, I mean, how many residential?
I apologize.
How many are in R3? In the R3? If this doesn't go through, if this doesn't go through, what else could go there?
If it's, if it is rezoned.
If it's rezoned.
I can't rattle off everything off the top of my head, but I mean, there's a number of things that can go in.
Could you bring that to the next meeting?
Absolutely. And I will note, while you're looking at the Thrive study, City of Terre Haute has the entire city code listed. It's a searchable PDF, and if you're interested, it's very easy.
He might know.
Oh, Marcus.
You know, Marcus?
I used to know it off the top of my head. I don't, you don't know everything.
I know pretty close. So there's three classes residential. We have R1, which allows single family, plus various other uses such as churches, schools, all those things. Then we have the R2 and the R3. So the main difference between R3 is all uses allowed within R1 and also multifamily. Now, some of those uses have multiple beds, such as, you know, nursing homes, things like that, may be able to go into there.
It can go in R3?
I believe so, but there's a lot of uses in R1 that also aren't single-family uses as well. But, I mean, the biggest difference is you can have more than one tenant in a single building. So whether that's a nursing home use or many other things.
I think that's important to note, too. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Judy Anderson, and I reside at 3881 Anderson Drive North. And I, we butt up, we're Park Place condominiums, and we butt up to the beautiful homes in Beaumont Day. And so we're here representing the entire community, not just our area. Basically, Ohio Boulevard was developed in 1921 to have a lot of green space and to have very unique, single-family dwellings. They have maintained that for over 100 years. It is on the Historical Register. The development that they're trying to decide to do does not fit any criteria of the original Ohio Boulevard. And I would say that most or all the people here want Terre Haute to succeed and to have growth. It will make us a better place to live, work, play, and pray. We all want that. But to what expense? We do not, especially the apartments. I think the apartments probably, they're probably a no to everybody. There's no place on the Boulevard that has multiple family dwellings. And to have that ruin the landscape of Deming Park, a jewel, to ruin the landscape of these beautiful homes in Beaumont Day, and the rest of Ohio Boulevard from 19th Street to Fruit Ridge, it's a travesty. And so we're here, hopefully that you would vote no on at least the apartments. The housing, the housing, we would wish and hope and pray that they would have more green space, and that they would have a variety of selections, that it won't be a cracker box, or it won't be a monopoly community, like nothing else in that area. I think you owe it to Edgewood Grove, and you owe it to Beaumont Day and the rest of the community to keep it as it is. We would love to have homes there. We would be glad, everybody here would be glad to work with the developers. We would be good neighbors. We are good neighbors. And so we invite you to please look at that very carefully. Take out the apartments that don't belong there. There are a lot of places in Terre Haute that would love to have those apartments. And there are a lot of empty spaces. But we, and we want homes, we want development in Terre Haute. We are not against that, but we are against having apartments to blur the community as it is right now. Thank you, council members, for letting us come up and discuss it.
Thank you, Judy.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Resolution Number 13?
Hi, my name is Kyle Kershaw. I'm a resident of Edgewood Grove, and I'm a civil engineer as well. I basically just have a question spurred by the fact that I am glad that the city engineer is gathering data. I think it's really important to gather data and have all that in front of you. What I haven't heard anything talked about is on the site, was wondering what plans are for reestablishing wetlands, because the entire west area, the wooded portion, is on the National Database of Wetlands. Now, I know that doesn't, somebody needs to have boots on the ground to verify those things. So I was wondering if that data has been gathered. The way I understood some of the earlier questions are that if this is all approved, it is that specific development that's approved. I don't see any place in there where there could be wetlands to be moved. There's not nearly enough green space for that.
Welcome.
Thank you, council. My name is Alex LaFever. I'm a student of Rose Homan, I'm a student of Dr. Kershaw, and I will soon enter the workforce as a civil engineer. All I want to say is that if you want to retain graduates, if you want to keep brain drain from happening, you need robust, affordable housing. This is how you do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Absol. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Michelle Marinselpain. I just wanted to thank you for your service, or really truly appreciate you giving us time to speak here tonight. As a civil engineer, I am not against development. I truly, I mean, this is what I do, right? This is my bread and butter. I also believe truly that we engage with the community and make sure that we have community engagement in all of our developments. I completely understand that a developer who has land and wants to build something with their money and make money off of that even, that's totally their prerogative, and that's fine. I do believe, however, that this resolution in front of you, that I know we're not voting on tonight, but we will in June, is not exactly that. There will be a TIF district, TIF Commercial District is part of what is in front of you. And that's not just using the developer's money. It's taxpayer money that is helping to make that development happen. And when that's the case, I truly feel that the community should have more than a say at a council, city council meeting, or a public meeting that was during working hours, not super well advertised and more difficult to get to. The taxpayers will be taking on risk during this time when the construction costs are extremely volatile. And on top of that, this development would drastically change the character of an area that is recognized on Historic Register as a historic neighborhood. And according to Terre Haute's own website, it states that Ohio Boulevard is the formal entry to the jewel of Terre Haute, Deming Park. And so I just ask you to consider the cultural appropriateness for a development here in this particular location at this formal entry to our jewel, and include a mechanism for community collaboration that is actually intentional in terms of gathering and collaborating, not just gathering input. And that might look like a Historic Preservation Commission. I know there's one being considered, but I would ask that it needs to be established and operating before we could actually consider that to be community collaboration and be able to move forward on a project that would be impacting our jewel, Deming Park. So I ask for a pause. I think not to do so is irresponsible, is not taking into account public opinion. And I know that we've heard the word transparent, but I also believe that it would still be non-transparent, even waiting a month. That's just how I feel, and I ask you to consider, to consider those thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. I briefly point out that a Historic Preservation Ordinance, which would establish such a commission, has been filed. We expect to have that on the council's agenda either next month or the following month. I haven't heard from the city attorney yet about that. But this would be a big step for Terre Haute, and it would be a, as Michelle intimated, an important tool in trying to guide whatever would get developed on this lot and other lots that are sprinkled throughout the historic districts of Terre Haute, which may eventually be designated. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. My name's John Lyons, and I'm a resident of Ohio Boulevard, recent retiree engineer as well. There seems to be a few of us in the room tonight. A couple of questions regarding the TIF. I know that it's a tax increment finance, so the value, as the value of my home on Ohio Boulevard increases, there'll be a piece of that that'll go to pay the debt services, I understand, on these loans.
No.
Not in your property.
Just within the district.
It's only property within that district.
Only the property within the plat- So this, so this project is basically self-sufficient, then, it's not going to rely on revenues. Does it project, I know there's been discussions about, uh, you know, using excess funds, which I'm kind of reluctant to say that that's going to happen, but to do other improvements, so I think it's maybe a little bit of a short sell to characterize the TIF district as it's going to generate enough revenue to not only pay the debt service, but to also be able to implement other projects outside of this project, the infrastructure. So I don't see necessarily, for many years, this project generating revenue enough to be able to pay for safety improvements at, at the intersection of Fruit Ridge and Ohio as an example, I think that's a little bit of a misleading statement to say that it could be used, because nobody's seen the pro forma on this. Um, and so, you know, I think that's the case. Also, I noted on this preliminary site plan, is, is the apartment complex, is that at maximum density? Could there be more units actually put on the property that's going to propose to be rezoned? And I think the answer to that is yes, and it almost looks as if there's two out parcels between the residential development and the apartment complex. What's going to happen to those two big green spaces there that are shown? So I, I, you know, I've not seen anything that says that, but they, you know, they've got little red lines around them, so to me, that appears as some sort of an out parcel for future development of some sort.
Those are good questions, John. If I may, just very briefly, uh, talk about TIF districts. What I think I heard our mayor, um, talk about, and I'm sure he'll jump up and correct me if I'm wrong, um, I think he was trying to, among other points, make the point that if a tax increment finance district is established on this bean field, then it joins a pool of Terre Haute tax increment finance districts, and the money can flow between those districts. So the idea is, or one of the ideas that I think, you know, I've heard a couple of attempts to explain, but if you don't swim in this stuff, you, it takes a while to really get it. But the idea is that there's a big downtown tax increment finance district, which generates money. There's a big, what we call the Walmart TIF district, out east on 46, which generates a lot of money. Uh, there's a very recently established new tax increment finance district, which encompasses the casino and the bean fields immediately to the west of it. We, the City of Terre Haute, took advantage of, uh, state law, change in the state law about a decade ago, and pooled all, I think now it's six, five, uh, with the new one, I think it's six, but I might be wrong about that, uh, established TIF districts, and the money can flow from one to the other. So, for example, the Walmart TIF district, the property tax that's paid in there, if the redevelopment commission chose to spend some of the money from that to solve traffic problems at the mouth of Demming Park, that could happen, because it would serve the TIF district that's being proposed here, regardless of whether or not there's enough income from the development that's happened yet. Now, I, I may not be explaining it very well either, uh, but the point is that once it, with each TIF district that's established, they enter a pool, and the funds from all of the TIF districts can flow from one to the other. I don't know if that helps or not, but it's an attempt to explain to John how that, what, how others have tried to explain this. Maybe if you hear it three or four more times, you'll get it, too. Okay, so that's everybody that's on the list. If you, if there's anyone else who wants to speak, uh, to Resolution 13, um, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Joy Sutter, I am a resident of Edgewood Grove, and I am a stay-at-home mom with three children, who actively use that area, as well as many of the people in this community. With this current layout and this current design, I wonder how it compares to development in other communities that promote, promote our active lifestyle communities number. Right now, our walkability number is very low in Terre Haute. I am a commuter with my children, you've probably seen me in my big bike, I go up and down Ohio Boulevard and all over my, this city with my children in my bike. I am concerned that there is not other structural, the extension of the trail is a delightful and wonderful idea, but it does not include a, going around this community, so this community can easily get out and cross over trails that could go on to, towards the stadium, we could advocate for more wider sidewalks. I am not seeing the green space availability with this high-density packing to support a more walkable, a healthier, and greener community. If there was an opportunity in this development to say, "We like green space, the apartments actually have the most green space, and that's appealing, but the apartments are ill-placed, they could be maybe off of Ohio in a different location, right on Ohio is not ideal." I do think the idea that with less density, we can provide the green spaces where people might want to walk to. People need a third space to walk to. If they don't have somewhere to go, they don't want to go. So assuming that everyone is going to want to walk to Demming, which does not have safe walking areas, I'll just throw that out there, but if they want to walk somewhere, and they'll say they are injured, they are elderly, or they are young, and they need a safe place to walk, they need somewhere safe to walk to. And this current plan does not support a healthy, walkable, usable space. And if we want to say that our community is growing, and that young people want to stay, they're going to learn that they are not going to be young forever, and that they need places to be. And so affordability, as a former teacher who cannot afford this sort of housing, we want houses that teachers, parents, these tech people who are going to come here with this wonderful opportunity with Rose, that's wonderful, but they are wanting more than this offers. And if we want to emulate other communities that have grown, we need to consider how this impacts that people want to get out. I'm going to tell you right now that Trail Cam, as someone who uses the current trails on a regular basis, is going to show a very limited amount, because where can they walk to? And where can those sidewalks be level, that are not already, I hear the mayor, I'm glad we're improving them, but if you say, I don't know, have a walker, a wheelchair, or you are using a stroller, they are unsafe to pass, and that is even one of the best neighborhoods in our community. So to try to say that we want to, this is going to bring people in, I think we need to look at the whole person, and not just the bottom line, so we can see that people want to move here at such a high, like, important space, and if I could throw out, if we're going to make it safer, we will have a way to get to Demming Park safely. Because currently, it is a run-and-jog, children go, 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 as I stop and break, so I'm just going to throw out there, and I would love to be a part of any committee that says we want to make Terre Haute safer for bikers, walkers, and our community, so that children can start walking to school, be in their community, and so that they can build relationships, because it is beyond just our neighborhood, and who is in our door, and under our house, is the elderly neighbor, is the person in our community that, so we can say, we are a community, and not just a bunch of people who live next to each other.
Thank you, Joy. Welcome, Casey.
Thank you. Um, my name is Casey Chatham, I am born here in Terre Haute, long, uh, a community member my whole life, 46 years, and a current resident of Edgewood Grove. A little bit more of a question in, in my novice understanding of TIFs, as so many have. I hear a lot about the money flowing from TIF to TIF within those regions to support one another in their debts. I do have the concern of, how does money flow out? If this turned out to be the stunning success that it's dreamed to be, and that kind of tax base is created at those price points, what, do those funds become trapped within those areas where other places in the community would need there more? Could somebody, anybody, address how that works?
That's a, that's a really good question. So on that question, usually with our debt obligations, when they're complete, we either absolve the TIF, or sometimes there's an additional project, so like the downtown TIF, quote, "has not been absolved," because there's an additional project. So, the short answer is yes, you would absolve it, so then it hits the city's general fund, which is a, a wider base. And then, to the previous woman's remarks, guys, please fill out that Safe Streets For All survey. We had a ton of public meetings to get trail and additional sidewalk funding, and four people showed up, and the federal government's like, "We can't give you guys money, because not enough people are filling out these surveys, please help me out, blast that everywhere, we need that survey to get the additional funding for the trails." Thank you.
Okay, um, so, this is the first of two resolutions that, uh, that this project, that we're going to be talking about this night, tonight, that involve this project. At this point, I'm going to close public comment and turn the council inward for a little while, and then we'll talk about the second one. So, council?
Ma'am, just very quickly, uh, just to be clear, we're asking this be tabled to the June 12th meeting.
Thank you, Eddie.
So, but, that doesn't mean that we'll still obviously meet in on the fifth to talk about the rezoning as well. So just to have everything line up, uh, we'd ask for the second meeting in June. Thank you.
Councilman Chalos.
There's no further, then I move that, we re, that we move that to the, uh, second meeting, June 2nd meeting.
June 12th.
The, second meeting in June, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
I didn't know you'd make that mention.
It's been moved by Councilman Chalos that we table Resolution Number 13, 2025, until our June 12th meeting. And, I'm sorry, who seconded?
Me.
Oh, and seconded by Councilman Dicker. All in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That's tabled. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Resolution 14, 2025, approving an amendment to the declaratory resolution for Brickyard Estates and Paddock at the Park Economic Development Area and Economic Development Plan.
All right. Petitioner?
Dustin's going to explain why there's two, two resolutions.
Great, thank you. Welcome back.
Good evening, President Nation and council members, Dustin Meeks, Barnes, and Thornburg. Um, so the, the first resolution establishes the economic development area, um, and establishes the, the commercial TIF district, um, and the second resolution sets up a residential TIF district, um, and they're slightly different approval processes, um, and also the residential TIF district, um, it comes with what's called a residential development plan, which is a, a more involved document than your standard economic development plan. Um, so the, the two resolutions reflects that it's, it's two different types of allocation areas, um, and to make it clear about that, the plan documents being, um, side along with each other, um, and it reflects that there's kind of the two elements of the project. So that's why the, the two resolutions, and the first one sets up the economic development area, and the second one then amends the economic development area. So both allocation areas live in the same EDA, um, but there, that's why there's two resolutions.
Thank you. Do the petitioners have anyone else who would like to address this before we, uh, before we take public comment? Okay. So, excuse me, we had a public comment signup sheet, um, on Resolution 14, uh, and the first person to sign up for this one is Vincent Little. And I think Vince may have left. Okay, uh, the next person is Judy Anderson.
Yeah.
And you've already gone, right? Okay, thank you, Judy.
I just followed Vincent, I didn't see what he was doing.
I understand. Uh, next up is Eric Reyes. Welcome, Eric.
Thanks. Um, I am Eric Reyes, I live on Hudson Avenue or West Hudson Drive, depending on which map you consult at the time. Um, so I have a small sailboat, uh, and I love to get on the water as much as possible, but the most stressful part of owning a boat is the boat ramp, right? You're under a lot of pressure, there's people behind you, there's time, and you make all kinds of mistakes when you're under that kind of pressure. And the only way to keep from ending up on one of those YouTube videos is to pause and take time to survey the area and understand what you're getting yourself into before you go down the ramp. I'm asking you to hit the pause button for more than a month. This has felt very rushed, I've heard statements from different individuals saying, "We need to act now, the money's on the line, if we don't get it, we're going to lose it, uh, the time to strike is now, we need the money." I feel like the, the council's being put under a lot of time pressure to act quickly on this particular thing. The fact that my council member did not know the details of this proposal until a few days ago speaks to that timing. I think more than a month or something of this magnitude. In particular, the city has never done a purely residential TIF before, everything has been mixed-use property. I feel like a residential TIF comes with more risk than a typical TIF that we've encountered. With more risk, I think there needs to be more time to investigate and get things in order. I appreciate the traffic study and the additional information, however, I am a professor, I would always counsel my students, get your information before you make the decision, don't make the decision, and then collect the data to figure out where the mistakes are. Again, if I'm going down my boat ramp, I don't drive the boat first and then figure out what's down there, I look to see what's down there first. Um, and so I appreciate the traffic studies being done now, but we, as the mayor admitted, we need a traffic resolution regardless, so the traffic study can sit, come first, and then use the information. Uh, we've heard information about, um, the need for housing, the, I've only been briefly looking after the Thrive study was mentioned, it does mention that housing is potentially needed, at the $150,000 price point, that's the big, red, bold conclusion, point one. Um, the other thing that it mentions about Vigo County in particular is that all of our population is projected to decline, except for senior citizens. So I would wonder if, if we look at this area, is, is there really a need for this type of housing at this price point for the population we're expecting? Again, I would want all of that information, if I were sitting in your position, before I was asked to make a decision on this, not make a decision and then we'll get you the information about where the problems might lie. Um, as people have mentioned, the, the way that TIFs work, um, as a result of keeping the income to pay off the debts, uh, we, they don't go to benefit the schools, and yet there's a burden being placed on the school districts. Fort Wayne has recently entered into a TIF agreement, and they, before proposing the TIF, entered into a collaboration with the school corporation to ensure that the school corporation received annual funds to support the additional burden being placed on that school corporation, it was a community effort. So while we heard earlier that there's no mechanism in place, we do have options, and I would encourage you to slow the process down, explore the options, and find a way to support the community, the, the additional burden would be placed on before making the decision. Again, I am new to all this, like many others, I'm learning things on the fly, but it seems backward to me to be asked to vote or even consider, even if it's being tabled, a commercial TIF on the other side before the property is zoned for such commercial activity. Um, I would encourage you to, again, put everything in place before making the decision. I am just asking for a pause to gather the information first, and to make sure that we can support the schools that we would be burdening before moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. Next, uh, on the signup sheet is Herb Rooks. Are you still here, Herb? Next, uh, Vin.
Don't worry, you got it right last time.
Welcome back, Vin.
I'll be very quick, because we said stuff the last time, and now that I know the tabling has, is going to occur, and we do have a little bit more time, I want to double, uh, double up on what, uh, Mr. Reyes said about taking the pause, because there is such an impact that comes from this. Uh, as a reminder, the TIF is supposed to be a last resort, that's not supposed to be where you start everything.
I'll be very quick, because we said stuff the last time, and now that I know the tabling has, is going to occur, and we do have a little bit more time, I want to double, double up on what Mr. Reyes said about taking the pause because there is such an impact that comes from this. As a reminder, the TIF is supposed to be a last resort, that's not supposed to be where you start everything. Are they going to stay in those houses once they get into those houses? And just to clarify, the "but for" argument actually doesn't say anything about development. And so far, every time somebody has mentioned the "but for" argument, they've used the word "development." Please read the code and see what it really says. Thank you.
Thank you, Vin. Next, Heidi, you say.
It's me again.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, just a couple of statements and a possible question. I noticed the humor with the traffic study, people laughing about that. I, I'm pretty certain that when that traffic study comes to fruition and the increased traffic as a result of the amount of homes that could potentially be there, pretty sure that laugh will be stifled. Anyway, I just had to say that. I, I found that actually a little bit offensive. As mentioned last night at the, the...
Area planning.
Thank you, the area planning, because there's so many things going on, and I too am trying to digest this, this and finish my school year. Mentioned last night that you guys have approved multiple commercial TIFs, but if it is my understanding that this is the first time that you would be approving a residential TIF in Indiana, the cit, of a city this size. So knowing the magnitude of that, we are the guinea pig. That's basically what's happening here. We are going to be the trial and error, and if we don't get it right, that could be problematic. One other question I do have for, I do have a question for the mayor. And I also wanted to state, there is a reason that the state of California stopped doing TIFs. They had so many lawsuits as a result that they had to enact a specific board to honor those and recognize those lawsuits. So yes, you have dabbled in the commercial TIF, but we've never done a residential. And it, to me, it seems like we need to pause this and have more information to be able to move forward in an appropriate manner. My final question that I do have is, will any of the development, I want it to be put on the record, and the reason I'm asking this question is because one of the attorneys had mentioned a piece of the property on Adams that could potentially be my and my husband's piece of property. I want to ensure, and I want to hear it this evening, that no residential private property will be used in the development. Can you answer that for me? Because somebody else had men, I think you had mentioned the...
If you're asking anything west of Adams is a single family, is that what you're asking?
I'm asking if my current property, which you had mentioned, Ohio Bull, or Adams Boulevard, my driveway, would be an extension.
We're not connected.
I want to ensure that none of that will be touched.
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah. Just to clarify, there is no plan to connect Adams to the existing Adams in Edgewood Grove, just to make sure, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, Mayor Sakpan?
Yeah.
Earlier, you mentioned, I, I'm, I'm aware that this is a new program, the residential TIF program. And for context, I've been around long enough to remember that we have done a residential TIF in Terre Haute. We always called it the Hellman TIF. It is just north of the railroad tracks from 7th to 9th Street. It was all built out, done, and then retired. My question for you, Mayor, is...
Yeah.
When you made comments earlier, you talked about 27 projects...
Mm-hmm.
...that you're tracking through the state. Are those this kind of project, residential TIF projects, or is that something else?
I'll have to double-check the exact amount. Different cities, I do see a lot of cities doing the multifamily. Michigan City's a great example. Vincent's Indiana, which is even smaller than us, theirs is multifamily with an abatement, so I'll have to pull it off of the IFA home loan website, Councilman Nation.
I, I guess, I'm confused, I'm, I'm confused too about the, the RIF part of that. Can you tell me what RIF stands for?
Yeah, so that's the Residential Increment Finance. And the reason why you would have to do a RIF is that guarantees that those homes inside of that RIF pay off the IFA home loan. And remember, it's backed by the developer, not backed by the city, which makes this different than traditional RIFs and traditional TIFs, to be honest. And you've got to bucket that in, because if you don't do that, the only other place you could house a loan or a bond like this would be your general fund, which we would never do, because that puts everyone's property taxes on it, or EDIT, which is Economic Development Income Tax, which we don't do bond work in. We do some leases in and some loans, but we do not do large bonds like this. Those are all done in TIFs because then it guarantees that those properties are paying for that type of development. So that's why that New Margaret project that we all worked in pass about a month ago guarantees that all the work that people see out east is not their property tax dollars.
Right.
It is those parcels there. And I do agree that the concept of TIFs is, like, I agree, and I'm happy California did that. The unfortunate reality is every time I go to Indianapolis, I get another gray hair dealing with them and how they view economic development. There are over four, 1,400, I think, 72 TIFs in the state of Indiana. I do not like how the state of Indiana does economic development. Do want to put that on record, so it's like, this is the tool that the state brought to us, and that is the tool that we, we have to work with. And I would, I would assume that many on this council would also have frustrating comments to TIFs as well, but I wish we could do what some other states that have different political backgrounds could do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
And my, you know, my observation, for what it's worth, after decades in this role on the city council, is we basically have two economic development tools. We have Tax Increment Finance District and Tax Abatements. These aren't tools that we have chosen. These are tools that the state of Indiana has made available to us. There are other smaller impact things, but when you get into the business of local government and the city council, these are the two things that we actually use in conjunction with the mayor and the redevelopment commission. Mayor?
So those, those are the two tools that traditionally the city has historically used. Technically, we've now started a third tool, which is also through Thrive called Strat Stack. That is another low-cost interest loan. So that way, the banks and the developer can share risk, and it takes it out of the city. But that is, it's not up and running yet. And that's a model that other communities, similar to like Fort Wayne, have done to help alleviate the whole conversation surrounding TIFs. So some of that, we hope to integrate with this project as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Councilperson Bowlin, you had something to say a couple of minutes ago. I'm sorry I cut you off. Is there a comment you wanted to make?
Oh, no, I'll wait and ask it a little bit.
Okay, thank you. We're still on a list. And next on the list is Kathy Taylor. Are you still here, Kathy?
Oh, I am.
Welcome.
Well, to be totally transparent, I no longer live within the city limits, but I am an East Sider. I was born and raised 3319 Poplar before Meadows Manor Nursing Home went in, and my dad always was very upset because there was a lack of zoning that allowed that to happen. I lived in Edgewood Grove, probably the best neighborhood to raise children in this city. Probably still is. My kids are, you know, your age.
Sixty.
But I do have, close. I do have, you know, an affinity for Ohio Boulevard, for this city. My dad ran for mayor many years ago. And I feel like Ohio Boulevard is a gem that we do not want to lose. This is a terrific project. It's the right project, it's the wrong place. And I understand that something will be developed on East Ohio Boulevard. I pray to God it is not this. I would ask, besides putting a pause on this, that you, as a council, work with citizens, work with the developer, and come up with something that is aesthetically compatible to the area. I've thought a lot about it. I have kids that live in Indianapolis, and in, in the area where they live, there are areas of more dense housing. They are surrounded by brick walls. And I would be happy if that happened. You know, the density here is ridiculous, but I know they have to make money. You know, that's the bottom line. But if they would reconsider, come up with some, you know, we have Beaumont, which is lovely. There are cul-de-sacs all along Ohio Boulevard. You could have cul-de-sacs in the area rather than this dense, and yes, it is cookie-cutter housing, there are only a few plans to choose from. But if you went to a cul-de-sac design, or if you did put a brick wall around it so we don't have to look at it, I'm not impressed by homes, eight homes on one side of the street, what is it, like 20-some on the other side in that same space? That's dense, and it doesn't fit aesthetically. Apartments don't belong there. I have a, a niece who is a big wig with a property management company in Florida, and I know the horror stories of what happens in apartment complexes. And yes, it might be great in the beginning, but then you get, you know, six guys from ISU living there so they can make the rent. It won't be great in 10 years. And that's not fair to the people who have invested their lives and their hard work on the other side of the street. And I sent an email to all of you, I hope that you got it. I would ask that each and every one of you take a walk down the Boulevard, get a feel for it, walk through Edgewood Grove. It's still, it's an old neighborhood, but it's still a great place to raise kids, and it's not going to be if this happens. It's, it's going to change the character forever. And if you love this city, don't let this happen this way. I know something is going to go there. I mean, I'm not stupid, but let's do it the right way. So let's put a pause on this, and let's get a, a group together to work and come up with something that's going to make everyone happy and not destroy Ohio Boulevard.
Thank you, Kathy. Looking at the clock, I'm reminded that I told my fellow council members that I would give us all a pause at 8:00, and now it's 8:15. I'm going to call a five-minute recess. There are restrooms just outside in the hallway if anyone needs to use them, and we'll see you back here at about 8:20. Thank you.